And it's mine, so I can't see what I did. Oh, I can look at this. So this is my question. I didn't have it out. And then here, she has to order the order of things. So, um, so that's on my list. I will send the light tablet and then I'll be back. Hello. This is for someone. I'm okay. Thank you. And other than that, I'm quoting both of them. Carol, share this. This is different sort of problem. You know, it's up to you. Whether you want to.
So your person comes and watches over us and gives us a kick in the ass.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. You can do that. Just so I can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I was in a hurry. Uh, I think I can watch. Yeah. I think I might also have to do this. Uh, a lot. It's a reverse. Should have probably. Yeah. Right?
Right.
I'm having, thank you. Oh, it's not done. Thank you. This time just on the right. Yeah. So. I do. Yeah. I turned it off. Good evening. This was the February twentieth, twenty twenty four University of the City Council meeting. I want to thank everybody for coming. Everybody, um, will please, um, stand for the pledge of allegiance. I'm sorry, I wrote the roll call first. Sorry for that. Um, this time so we call the roll. Mr. King, Mrs. Sacks, here. Mr. Cooney.
Here.
Mrs. Wise. Here. Mr. Rod.
Here.
Ms. Marshall. Ms. Weiser.
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse, um, Councilwoman King and Councilwoman Marshall?
So. So.
I'll say.
This time so we call the roll. Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rod.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Now, let me know if they stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as one.
We're now to the reading and disposal of the journal. I want to thank Ms. Thomas for the detailed minutes. Is there, are there any corrections or additions to that? Is there a motion to approve the minutes? I will need the motion. Is there a second? This time so we call the roll. Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rod.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Okay, are there any additions or removals from the agenda? Ms. Weiser.
Vice Mayor, at the Building and Housing Committee meeting, we discussed an issue regarding ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh two, where we had a typo that caused some issues with the total dollar for permit fees. Um, it requires a change in the commercial building permits with base fee valuation fee. It showed point oh five, but should be point oh two. Um, I spoke with, um, Mr. McConville just before the meeting, and I'm going to let him explain immediately what we need to do tonight. We're going to have to add something to the agenda tonight, and then, um, it will cover anything that's coming in and also allowing us to correct what we made in the law previous in that window where the ordinance started that. So, Mr. McConville.
Hello. Do the rest of this. Thank you. So my, my understanding is that there's, um, what amounts to an error or a typo with respect to, um, the rate that's established by the ordinance for issuance of construction permits. And, um, that in fact, the, um, rate should have been, um, lower than what's currently set forth in the ordinance. And that the error is typographical, um, not substantive. And so, um, what we have done in the past, um, in this municipality and others when that happens is, um, we pass a subsequent ordinance to correct what we refer to as a scribbler's error and correct the typographical error. And we do it, um, on a retroactive basis to the date at which the ordinance was initially adopted, so that for all ten periods of the ordinance is in effect, the, um, correct rate is charged. Um, we refer to that, we refer to that as an ordinance being non-proport, which means now for that, so to pass it at your next meeting, it will be retroactive to the date of the initial passage. So what I would suggest is that, um, council add to the agenda a motion to direct the law director to draft an ordinance correcting a scribbler's error with respect to ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh two. Is there a motion to add that motion to the agenda?
So move.
I'll second. This, this time so we call the roll. Mrs. Sacks.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rod.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Okay, so that will be letter D through the motion to Metro Executive Session to be letter E.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McConville.
What is this? Not to be. Letter E, letter B, and then motion for technical.
These were something I did. Yeah, there wasn't an idea.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. So, E and I. Okay, are there any other additions or rules from the agenda? Okay, are there any comments from the audience? Okay, hearing them. Um, we're now to reports and communications from the mayor and taking action around. Do you have any comments?
I didn't think. The eclipse is coming, and University of the Heights will be in the middle of the path of totality. There's a reason to celebrate. Like many cities in northeast Ohio, University of the Heights will host a party for the total eclipse. Our event will be on Monday, April eighth, from one thirty to four thirty P M. At Walter Stinson Community Park. We're partnering with our friends at Heights Library and Destination Cleveland. Line entertainment will be provided by W J C U DJ Zachary Sunutko. And Outbound Coffee will be at the Waltz to sell food and drinks. There will be science activities for the kids, thanks to Heights Libraries. Most importantly, we will provide protective solar eclipse glasses for all, so that residents may enjoy the eclipse safely. The glasses we purchase for this event meet international safety standards, whereas ordinary sunglasses cannot be used to look directly at the sun. We want to protect from injury anyone who would seek to view the eclipse as it happens. Only upon reaching totality, the point where the moon completely obscures the sun, can one safely view the eclipse with a naked eye. The eclipse event is free to open all. We encourage residents to walk to the event if possible. We expect unprecedented traffic in the region around the eclipse. Communications and civic engagement director, Mike Cook, is unable to attend tonight, but he asked me to let you know, um, let you all know that New Gazette magazine is out. Advanced copies are available at City Hall and in businesses across the city as well as the library. Residents should be receiving their copy in the mail by the end of the week. The eclipse is the cover story among several stories featured. I have a recycling update. Today, I met with other members of the site consortium at the solid waste district's offices. We went over a draft invitation to bid a set of documents for pricing for both the landfilling of solid waste and the processing of recyclables. Both contracts are up this year. Based upon the report from SCS Engineering and subsequent discussion, it will be my recommendation to continue participation in the East Side Consortium with a view towards preparing ourselves to accept a bid on the processing of these recyclables. Alan Pangton, Service Director, and I will be bringing resolutions to council to the effect of continuing participation with the East Side Consortium. As reminded, the other consortiums cities are City of Ridgewood, City of Cleveland Heights, Village of Highland Hills, City of Independence, City of Livers, Village of Waterlands, City of Fetter House, City of Shakerhead, City of Solon, and the Village of Woodbridge. City of University Heights is currently paying one hundred five dollars ninety-two cents per ton to process recyclables and forty-four dollars twenty-one cents a ton to landfill solid waste. The Heights modernized its systems, increasing its recycling by seventy percent, and under a blended market grade concept is currently paying just twenty-eight dollars forty-two cents a ton for its recyclables, which saves money compared to even landfilling. I have a University Square update. Today, the court granted an extension on the sale hearing in the University Square. It was set for February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. The new hearing date is March twelfth, twenty twenty four. It's March twelve, March twelve, twenty twenty four. It is anticipated that the additional time will reduce finalized terms among the stakeholders, which the target faces the current ownership of the city with the sole tender for the University Square property, which is K L Williams, a senior developer we've been working with, uh, since twenty nineteen. Average time, the sale may close, and the development of the University Square may proceed. Thank you. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in terms of reports and communications from the city council, I do not have any. Do any other council members have any reports? Good thinking. We're up to reports and communications from the directors of the Department of Finance, Department of Law, Public Safety, Public Service, Public Service, and any other department that's Department of Finance.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, just to give you a little brief update, revenue and expense for the month of January. Our net revenue in the general fund was a little over one point one million. Our net expense exceeded that. The total expense in the month of January for the general fund was one point six five million. Uh, the reason for that is that we had a cutoff in the beginning part of December to make sure that everything balanced out by the end of the year. So we had some bills that we had paid this month that were key to at the end of December. From standpoint of all our funds, similarly, revenue was one point two three million. Expenses were two point two million. So, um, the, again, we had a number of bills, both in the general fund and in the capital fund, the street construction fund, that were holding at the end of December. So, um, from a revenue standpoint, the other important thing is the Higahoga County delay in collection of property taxes until mid-February. Uh, normally, we would have got a pretty healthy first advance in January. Because of the extension of that deadline, um, the revenue that came in in February was not that great. But it has picked up in February. We did get a second advance in February as well. So, um, look forward to seeing everybody next week for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Penning. Are there any questions from Sir Penning? Okay, um, Mr. McConville, Department of Law.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. A couple of items this, this evening. First is that I am asking for an executive session tonight to give council updates on, um, the Alexandria Shul litigation, um, the Yabi litigation, and, um, the University Square litigation. Uh, secondly, you have an ordinance in front of you this evening related to an engagement letter for Nicola Goddardson and Cooper. Um, I am precluded from commenting, um, on that ordinance during its substantive discussion, and I cannot, um, speak to any of the substance of that. Um, however, I have had an opportunity to think about, um, one aspect of Nicola's ongoing representation. Um, and then is that I would, um, I have a preference that whoever your new law director is, or my successor is, be able to comment on the scope of the engagement prior to the adoption of the ordinance. Um, I want that, that relationship to be collaborative from the start. Um, I, I want whoever that person is to be able to, um, put their two cents in about any of these matters and would prefer that the ordinance be placed on first reading and then adopted at some point in time, whether it's at the end of March or the end of April, when, um, my successor is able to comment on it. That concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. McConville. Um, Public Safety, um, Chief Rogers.
Vice Mayor, I have a report.
Thank you. Um, Fire, Chief Perko.
No report this evening, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Service Director, I don't think Mr. Pennington is here. Do you have any report?
Uh, yeah, no, no report, uh, other than what I already delivered for our East Side Consortium.
Okay, thank you. Um, Building?
No, no report.
Thank you. Okay, Housing and Community Development?
I have no report.
Okay, Engineer?
No report.
Communications and civic engagement?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Cook is excused this evening, but I gave a report on his act during that.
And, and development, I don't think Mrs. Parker's here.
Yeah, she's excused this evening. Great.
Okay. We're now to reading and disposition of ordinance resolutions, motions, and consideration of agenda items. Agenda item eight, ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh six, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Wallace Panter Group for the provision of engineering services against city engineer and declaring an emergency. Um, Mayor, would you like to discuss this?
Sure, I'll, I'll be brief. I know that there's been a lot of thought on the fact that I was sufficiently, I, I provided information sufficiently and detail with regard to the process that's ensued since the engineer was lost before the council. Um, there have been some changes to the proposal by Wallace Panter, and we also considered a length of the proposal by, by Osborne. Um, as, as indicated in my memo, Osborne had, um, when they responded to our RFQ, uh, state qualifications together with a proposed scope and, uh, a proposed retainer, which was a reduced scope from the scope that we had placed in our RFQ. So knowing, you know, after, you know, meeting with Osborne to discuss their scope and discuss possible, possibly bring them along as the engineer, it felt that if we were to have an apples to apples comparison between the two firms, if, I wanted to afford Wallace Panter an opportunity to re-quote based upon the economic scope as Osborne had envisioned it. And they came back with a much lower number than they had initially proposed, when they had originally bid. Still more than Osborne's, but I think the, you know, there are a couple of factors that are key here, which are that Wallace Panter, that is currently representing for the municipalities and the county and doing so well, having spoken with representatives of those cities. Um, Osborne is a very reputable firm with a long history. It is not currently, it's just trying to get off the ground in some municipal, uh, engineering practice. And, and that's not a bad thing per se, but it is, um, it just happens to be the case. And in the, when it comes to the, the actual quotes, while the, uh, retainers rates are still higher for Wallace Panter than they are for Osborne, Wallace Panter is willing to agree in the long term to fixed amounts for increases over time, um, tied to our collective bargaining agreements, which are arrangements that they had used in other cities, like Fairby Park right here in the old Heights. So next year, when our United States Police get a four percent raise, then there would be a four percent increase next year for, for Wallace Panter. That four percent raise is actually this July, but we would not be looking until twenty twenty-five for an increase. We also know from our collective bargaining agreements that there is a two percent raise coming in, um, in, uh, July of twenty-five, so twenty-six would be a two percent increase. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight would then be hinged upon whatever the lowest raise is negotiated on the various CBAs in our city historically, at least since I've been here. The raises have been the same across all departments, whether it was a two, 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 a zero, three and a half, three and a half, or what we have now with, uh, the four, four, two. Uh, Osborne, on the other hand, and I asked specifically if they would agree with fixed rate increase, declined to do that, wanted to be able to have the freedom to quote us all the rates every September throughout, you know, the various options. And, and while I can understand why they might want to do that, especially since, you know, they're newer, they're new sponge, and they're new to these kinds of arrangements, I prefer the certainty of the fixed rates. And I think it helps us in long range planning and, and in budgeting to, to know the reasonable certainty, what we can expect, you know, that part of engineering cost, uh, which isn't to say that Osborne would immediately raise the rates in excess of, uh, what we would be paying Wallace Panter, but we simply don't know. So, the, these were two of the deciding factors. They're, they're both excellent firms, and either firm would serve this city well, I'm confident in that. But, but in a close call, I would nevertheless recommend that we bring on Wallace Panter and Monty, and I'd ask for your support to authorize me to agree to the contract to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney. I'd like to hear discussion. Anna Spencer.
Um, Mayor, in reviewing the ordinance you sent us, I noticed that part of the, um, section that covers is covered by the, uh, monthly retainer. Item I and, uh, item E are just shown as reserved.
That's correct.
What are they?
Reserves, if it means reserved in legal parlance.
Reserved for what?
Uh, meaning that what they had done when they wrote the contract was, we had, I'm going to draw the contract here, we had retainer items A through M that we had requested be in the retain. So for items E and I, those two items have been pulled out of the retainer and have now been put into the non-retainer items. But to keep the lettering to correspond with our RFQ, um, we didn't re-letter. We simply put the word reserved there. Um, there have been other times in, in ordinances and bill documents, and if you would like to elaborate, where, where when we have a form, we might use the word reserved to mean that there's really nothing there at this point, but to preserve the lettering, we've inserted that word. It may be more hard for that. Yeah, I, I would, um, I agree wholeheartedly with the, the description. It, it's a common, um, method of contract drafting. Rather than re-lettering or renumbering provisions where something has been extracted, um, you simply put as a placeholder the word reserved, um, which, um, simply means you're to move to the next letter or number.
Okay, the follow-up question on that then is, if someone wants to put something back in there, that would then come to us for approval? That would change the ordinance?
Okay.
Okay, the second question is, I noticed in this contract, as well as in other contracts, like SafeBill, we have nothing about failure to do what is in the contract. There are no penalties. There's nothing about if something isn't done, how that would be addressed. Um, I would think that in protecting the city, we would want something like that? Or do we just, hmm, hope for the best?
Well, I have a couple of thoughts about that. One is that the failure to perform the duties, um, that are listed in the contract would be a breach of contract. And so it's a common law claim, um, for breach of contract. But more significant than that in my mind is the termination provision. And the termination provision here is a ninety-day termination. Um, in my mind, it's modest enough. You can turn over your engineer, um, middle of the year if you're not getting satisfactory performance. And it's going to take you that long anyway to go through another RFQ process and find someone new and or to negotiate a contract with a party that you already favor. So, um, I, I think you do have a hammer in this contract. That hammer is the right to terminate at any time. Not only is there this, and, um, so I would be comfortable recommending the contract on that business.
However, if, if it's something, I, a lot of what I've seen happen are minor things where if we have employees, we have a way to make corrections without having to pick up a huge hammer. Like, we're going to terminate this. Um, I, I just always feel very unfun, but there's nothing under assessment.
Well, if I might add, it's a professional services contract. And if we reach a point with any provider of professional services, this one or any other, that they are not doing what they should be doing, and we're not able to rectify the situation, you know, I'm not going to want them to continue. So I, you know, there's no wanting to compel somebody to, to complete a professional services contract because you may not like the product you get. You know, the example I often think of is, is maybe not so much, you know, in this realm, but in the entertainment realm. If you have a contract with, with a DJ or a singer or, or, you know, a theatrical troupe to put on a performance, and you have a dispute, last thing you should want to do is put them on in front of a crowd and have them act out the way they might act out of the bat. So, um, you know, this is an instance where, where, you know, because it's a professional services contract, I don't think we treat it the same as, as we might treat, you know, a stubborn employee that needs, you know, disciplinary direction. It's either working or it's not. They're not very professional enough to, you know, do the work in, in an appropriate way if they're in a law to terminate them. Well, I would, I, I guess I would have to add, you know, you, if, if the, engineer does something or omits to do something that results in damage to the city, you have claims of common law. So you have breach of contract claims, you have no practice claims. I mean, this is a licensed individual, um, who is obligated to meet professional standards in terms of the job they do for the city. If they fail to do that, and if they fail to do that, creates some kind of economic harm for the city. You have recourse to the courts and claims. So, as I said, I, I think, you know, there's nothing in here that says, for example, you can only terminate them for cause. You don't have to prove anything. Uh, there's no exclusivity provision in here, so they don't have to be the only engineer that you use, whether in your employ. You can decide to go out and hire any other particular engineer for any other particular service or project, as long as you do it within the bounds of our contracting procedures law. So I, I think there's a lot of different avenues for recourse here.
here. The contract really does not cost me a hard-term measure of legal advisory.
Thank you, Ms. Weiser. One comment that I just want to make is, you know, this could have been resolved six weeks ago while this could have come back. I'm not sure what happened. They obviously came down on their price. I don't think any of us realized that they were not in the scope of RFP or RFQ, so that definitely got lost me. But besides that, I just wanted to make sure that the residents know that. I will make a motion to authorize the mayor to, I will make a motion to authorize ordinance 2024-06, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Wallace Pantry. Is there a second?
I'll say.
It's not on emergency? I'm sorry, on emergency.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Let's do second first.
I would say that. I'll say.
On emergency?
On emergency, yes.
Here.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, Wallace Pantry follows, the other vendors didn't. So Wallace Pantry was the only firm that actually followed the scope of the retainer that we put into the RFQ process. Osborne did not follow it. What we did was, we asked Wallace Pantry if they would bid on the narrowest, as narrow as mine. And then we could have a true apples-to-apples comparison based upon what Wallace Pantry would have bid if they had taken out those four items that Osborne had made out. Now, you'll recall, you know, I passed out a consulting engineer comparison sheet on January, you know, that was dated January 16th, 2024, and there were 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 different items that in one or more of the municipalities they also represented aren't in the retainers. We still have a fairly robust scope for our retainer, it's just not as robust as it was. But similarly, in those other cities, they charge $3,800, $5,390, we're coming in at $3,800. So, you know, we're now running along with those other cities with respect to what we'll be paying. A few things will be hourly, a few more things than otherwise would have been had we done their previous retainer. But if we've gone with Osborne, all of those things will be hourly as well.
Mr. Rock?
Okay. First, I'd like to thank Wallace Pantry for adjusting their fee, given this collective engagement that we've had to do what's best for the citizens and residents here. I do want to correct the mayor's comment about following the competitive pricing submission requirement. According to the RFQ under Section 4, competitive pricing and submission below its cost proposal does not guarantee that the firm will be worth a job, listing hourly rate and costs for all permanent tasks, including overhead products for items 1A through M, monthly retainer items, it goes on. The requirement here was to list hourly rates. So to say that a firm followed instructions because they only put their hourly rates, I would say is inaccurate when the submission requirements ask specifically for hourly rates, not lump sum. That being said, it's nice that we do have apples-and-apples comparisons of these two firms. There was a question earlier about items E, items I, we have to refer to the old contract letter E. Just to put this out there, the city engineer shall review plans for stormwater compliance, so that particular item is now mainly hourly. Osborne had submitted an hourly proposal for item E, so under Wallace Pantry, it would be hourly. And then item I, that says observe, the original notation here was, the city engineer will review the design and observe the construction of public improvements performed by the city or by entities other than the city when requested by the mayor. So now that is hourly. I do want to caution, though, that when the city engineer is engaged in design work, they should not be reviewing their design. We would need somebody to review their design. So I would just, this is by request of the mayor, so when projects are in design, the mayor has the opportunity to reach out for a third-party review of the design work. The other thing was, oh, the fee, I'm fine with the fee. I just want to, I just, I want to caution when we say we're going to match the union rates, you know, union employees pay dues and have to fight for their union compensation. So I just want to be really careful when we say it. We're just going to match the fees. That's great that we're going to do that, but I, these union negotiations have a little special place. So, and unions do set wages for non-union employees. I just want to be careful when we talk about that. And then the last thing is, I don't want to get into the business of consultants writing up the contracts. We mentioned that Wallace Pantry wrote this contract. You know, they're working for us. I feel that we should be writing up the contract. There will be contracts in the future for design work, for other services outside of the scope here, may it be hourly or lump sum, whatever they propose. So I just don't want to get into the business that the consultant does the contract writing, because they're going to do what's in the best interest of themselves, or the entity that needs to do what's in the best interest of the town mayor. So I want us to have the offering of those contracts.
Thank you, Ms. Rock. Does anyone else have any other comments?
I do have one thing I want to clarify, just so that it's clear to members of council. The increase in the engineer's fees from year to year, tracking the labor union raises as a contractual term. So it's automatic, but qualified by the fact that you have four separate renewal options. So your contract is really year-to-year. If you decide that you're no longer willing to pay the raise, you can elect not to renew the contract. But otherwise, there wouldn't be a basis for arguing about what the, what the raise would be year-to-year.
Yeah. If I may, it's also a matter of freight. And one of those things is this, McCade Engineering, which preceded Wallace Pantry in the cities on the West Side, had a value with regard to respect for union work, and extended like this, they never wanted to take a raise if the union employees didn't get one. So they would go zero if they were adding zero for some reason. They thought it was unseemly if they would have an adjustment up in their professional services if the union employees in the city didn't get a raise. So, you know, they, the way that they then squared that away was tying their increase to what, if any, raises the union employees want. I understand Mr. Rock's point, but I, you know, I tend to, you know, see it the other way with respect to, you know, this, this render of professional services is never going to get an increase higher than what our union workers. And if our union workers get a raise for some reason, like the year we had zero, 2020, they may get some.
Just a quick clarification that, so, but the inverse could be true, where union employees' compensation scales increase, but we don't necessarily have to increase the engineer, because it's a year-by-year contract. Is that correct?
Right. I mean, you can always negotiate with them, and they'll kind of know. But if they don't agree to the economic terms that you're willing to agree to, you won't exercise your option.
And not that doubt.
Then you would go out for RFQ.
Sure. Just in situating circumstances like COVID, where we had to cut costs what we could, if the union had already had these in place, they would be getting their increase.
Right. I don't mean to suggest that you can't negotiate with them. Of course you can. You have options to renew. But the contract does have as a term that raises your year track the union. And I just wanted to make sure that you knew that.
Thank you, Ms. Rock. So there is a motion on the, on the floor. We have a roll call of suspension of the rolling systems.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
And on the main motion?
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
The ordinance passes. Gonna item B, ordinance 2024-05, authorizing the mayor to enter into an engagement letter agreement with Nicola Grant and Cooper LLC for ongoing legal services. And we are going to put this on first reading. We discussed, and I'm going to bring this out into the sunshine in executive session, and I also asked Mr. McConville to create an engagement letter. There are, for his firm, in light of his resignation, because there are some very specific legal, or actual very specific litigation that is occurring that he has historical knowledge of, and a deep understanding where our new law director does not and will not. So we wanted to retain him for that, those ongoing issues, based on his discussion and his law director report. We'll have this on first reading, and when we hire the new law director, we'll discuss it between the two of them and in open session, and go from there. Does everybody agree with that? No further questions. We have a roll on to letter item C. Motion to authorize and accept a bid proposal for ease of work for the fire department wellness education curriculum and various other health services ending December 31st, 2024, in a amount not to exceed $99,750 and funded by the remaining ARCA grant. Chief Percol?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good evening. This request is based off the request I brought forward in the January meeting, seeking bids to go off this program. The last safety committee meeting, we provided an update. At that time, we only had one bid. And at the conclusion of the bidding process, it remained that we only had this one single bid. This company, Ease at Work, happens to be our employee assistant plan provider with the city for a few years now. We do have a good rapport with them. They are used to working with public safety and providing the scope of services here to meet the grant requirements.
Thank you, Chief Percol. And just to remind us, you did not receive the money yet. You pay out and then you get reimbursed?
That's correct.
And you will produce receipts for the $99,750, not the full $100,000?
Correct. There's no matching funds for the grant.
Are there any other questions, Ms. Weiser?
I have something. Since we only got one quote, do you have any idea, is this matched in other departments, or is this something that a lot of departments currently don't have?
A lot of departments don't have it. We've been following all along. I've referenced the International Association of Firefighters, International Association of Fire Chiefs, Wellness Initiative. That manual outlines like five main categories. One will be medical examinations, which we put out in RFQ for, and are in the process of conducting right now. We've had ongoing fitness assessments in collaboration with John Carroll for about six years now. We've been doing a lot of the data collection, but one of the key components that we've been missing was behavioral health. So during the pandemic, this with Ease at Work, that is part of this wellness initiative, the IAFF manual. And a second component is peer support training. We currently have one member that just finished, and two members that are going to enroll in peer support training, as funded by this grant initiative as well. And then the third component is seeking professional behavioral support through clinician services like this one. To answer your question a little more directly, because of our funding and what the governor did for the first responder grant here, they're recognizing that public safety needs this assistance, and we need this education. We all know that, especially the professions that are predominantly male, there's a stigma about trying to seek help and assistance for ourselves. And that's especially true to those in public safety that are used to always being on the giving end and not proceeding end. And as behavioral health issues rise, suicide rates increase in public safety, the state has been taking a close look at all the data. They've been running surveys and collecting stats. And I would believe that that is why they are issuing out this kind of money to a lot of public safety departments in the state. So we did look and cross-reference with other departments, not only throughout the state, but in northeast Ohio. We drafted our RFQ to make sure that our services are compliant.
Thank you, Chief. I think on a personal level, that this is the kind of program that while it's new and it seems strange, it probably is one of the best programs for first responders, because you guys see things we never see. And, you know, I think it's really good that. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there any motion? Second. This time to the other room.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Letter D is the motion to remove the contract for municipal engineering services.
Yeah, I'd suggest that's moved, because A has been taken through.
I think A really should have been removed. Correct?
Well, it's, I mean, you're applying by virtue of upraising the contract. So I believe, the mayor can correct me if I'm wrong, that this item was essentially placed on the agenda as a placeholder in the event that council rejected item A.
It was initially a placeholder for item A, and then we kept it on as D. Perhaps if A had not worked out, we could have explored our options. But if that, you know, A was approved, and I believe that the ordinance in A also serves as confirmation of the point.
Yeah, I, yes.
So I'm satisfied that the ordinance is met, you are. Okay.
Do we need to make a motion to remove item D? So is there a motion to remove item D from the agenda?
Second.
I'll second that. This time to the other room.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
So we have a renewed letter D, this is a motion to direct the law director to...
It would be a motion to direct the law director to draft an ordinance to correct a script nurse error in ordinance 2024-02.
I saw move.
I'll second. So it really is D.
Do we have to do that on emergency?
No, it's a motion. I'll have it on the agenda for you at the next meeting. That will be an emergency ordinance, and it will be drafted in a way as I indicated before. But just for purposes of our record, it will be drafted so that it's retroactive to the date of initial amendment.
Thank you.
This time to the other room.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Okay. We will now have a agenda on item F. We are going to have a motion to enter executive session after we have the reports from standing committees for the purpose of discussing legal proceedings. Real estate matters or just legal proceedings?
Legal proceedings in the real estate matters, and just, you know, for the reference for Gobby, Alexander Schul, and University Square.
Does she have a little bit of, um, business aspect?
I would defer to the mayor on that.
There might be a depends on.
So that's who the audience to determine if they want to stay or not.
You may want to sit around if you want to hear a motion.
So is there a motion to enter executive session?
So, second.
This time to the other room.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Thank you. Reports of standing committees and taking action there. Ms. Weiser building a mountain?
We did the permit re-change discussion. We also talked about the SafeBuild contract, and perhaps the mayor might be willing to answer a question. You're out of the room. Did SafeBuild send a complete contract, get rid of those addendums? Have we gotten that yet?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay. Because Mr. Chief was going to follow up on that. We are looking at... We are looking at flow charts for housing. We'd like to thank Mr. Engelbreit, who has spent some time, and also Councilman Cooney, working together. We're trying to get that sorted out so there'll be not only flow charts for residents, because there is an issue when people come in, what do I need? How do I go through this process? And we're trying to make that as clear as possible for homeowners and also contractors. That's continuing. We continue discussion of the preparation of the new letter for exterior inspections and also address some realtor concerns that had come up on point of sale and seek to find a way that we can begin to resolve that. I'll send a letter to, or email to Mr. McConville. We did talk briefly about some rental issues. That's going to take a little bit of research to get into what's going on with, in other cities, what kinds of ordinances they have, how they're dealing. Now, with the proliferation of out-of-state companies coming in, buying houses, using them as rentals, but not pulling rental permits, so, you know, we sort of buy by accident rentals, and it gives the city less control over those units. And that's about where we got to tonight, and we get to go back and try to get these things finished now. Next one.
Thank you, Ms. Weiser. Community outreach, Mr. Kane is not here. He did not submit a report. FM Development, Mr. Ross?
No.
Thank you. Finance, there is a finance committee meeting next week. We will be discussing, discussing the draft budget. There will be one to two meetings before the budget is proposed, and refer to the city council, as be passed by March 31. And preparation, Mr. Cooney?
Your report, Mr. Kane.
Thank you. Safety, Ms. Marshall. The one thing that she asked me to report is that we are still having some parking issues, and she has discussed this with Chief Rogers, Bell War, particularly in Washington, and she will be framing up service and utilities. Mrs. Sacks?
Thank you. The next Service and Utilities Committee meeting will be March 6 at 6:00 PM, where we'll continue our discussion and hopefully finalize about the recycling, used recycling collection. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Committee of the Whole, there is also a Committee of the Whole meeting next week to interview potential law directors, and there is also a poll out for a council retreat that will be coming up within the next month or so. So we are now going to go into executive session. So we are now going to go into executive session. When we need you? When? Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Someone?
Second.
It's time to sweep the room.
Mrs. Sacks?
Hi.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rob?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
I'd like to add an agenda item, I believe, agenda item G. Mr. McConville, can you please state the agenda item?
Yes, the agenda item would be a motion to authorize the expenditure of $1,050,000 for purposes of acquisition of the Yapi real estate.
I will make a motion?
This would be the motion to add to the agenda.
On emergency.
It's just a motion.
Just a motion.
I'll say.
I need a motion, and Mr. Rob's advocate.
Mrs. Sacks?
Hi.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rob?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
So now you would be considering whether to make a motion to authorize the expenditure of $1,050,000 for acquisition of the Yapi properties. Is there a motion?
And I will make that motion.
Sorry.
For purposes of the record, and just to make sure everyone's on the safe page, and council is aware that the parties to the litigation will proceed to negotiate a purchase agreement that would contain details about the acquisition entitled to the property along with payment for same and dismissal of the litigation. And that purchase agreement would be placed in front of the council by ordinance. And we hope to add that to you for actions in the next meeting.
It's time to sweep the room.
Mrs. Sacks?
Hi.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rob?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Someone? That's what I'm hearing here.
It's time to sweep the room.
Mrs. Sacks?
Hi.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rob?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.